Great. I'm gonna call the meeting of the planning board for the city of Peabody from May 20th. I'm gonna call it to order. In pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No one in-person audience, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post the cities on the city's website and audio and video recording, transcribed in other comprehensive recordings as soon as possible after the meeting. Now folks can contact us via Zoom and if they're hearing my words, they already have the links. Additionally, this will be telecast on local access cable and I do believe it will be on YouTube in the future. And with that, we'll go to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 15th and May 6th. There's a typo on the agenda here.
We had only the minutes for April 15th. Is that right Drew?
Uh, there should have been both in there.
They're both there.
I didn't see the other set.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of April 15th and May 6th, 2021.
I have an amendment.
Amendment or a second?
An amendment. Well, second, second first and then amendment if I may.
Please.
Drew, could you put the date on the top of the April 15th ones? It's missing the 15.
Okay, yeah.
And I thought the Blythe vote on the tree was actually 6-2, not 7-1, but Tom's not here, so we can't ask him. It's not a big deal obviously either way, but.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, I can amend that. I have the video of it, so.
So we do have a second with the amendment and can we have a show of hands for approval?
Aye.
Let the record show that everybody's raised their hand.
Next order on the agenda is Land Court. We have nothing. Okay. Site building permit, plan review, 68 Prospect Street.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the applicants, I believe they're together. They are here. I'm gonna unmute them right now.
Can you hear us?
We can. So Joe, I have your plans that you sent to me. I can have it, I can have it that, sorry, I muted you by accident. You can unmute yourself. I can allow you to, just kidding, I will share my screen, I guess, and if you want me to switch through slides, I can just do that. It's not allowing me to.
Can you just share the screen? I have it open. I have the PDF open.
Uh, you know, I'm gonna promote you to panelist and then I'll allow you to be able to share the screen so you can run the slideshow yourself there. So you you should be able to share your screen now if you wanted to share your presentation. You muted yourself.
So, are we good now?
No, you, you should be able to share your screen to show the presentation.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can see our screen?
No.
No.
Nah. Well, we can. You want, you guys wanna come up here?
Get plenty of room.
So Drew, if it's, if it's easier for you to kind of go slide by slide, we're happy to do that.
That's fine. I will, I will share my screen.
And gentlemen, just for the record, who do we have?
My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney here in Peabody, Mass. And with me this evening is Joseph Betancourt, Kevin Hoyle, the owner, the, well, the proposed purchaser of the property and Chris Mello from Eastern Land Survey. Those are the four that are at this end this evening.
Thank you.
Now, do we?
Gentlemen.
I think he'll tell us.
You want us, but do you want me to go to a slide?
Okay, so we're ready to kick it off?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you everyone. Good evening. My name is Joe Betancourt, architect. We've had a couple of really good meetings so far. Some of what you're gonna see tonight will incorporate a couple of those issues that we've, we've talked about with the first two meetings. Could you go to the next slide, please? So just quickly, general project overview, our total site area is 2.41 acres, about 106,000 square feet. Once cleared, we have an available FAR of one for development. Our proposed development, we're showing roughly 81,000 gross square feet, which is an FAR about .77. The slide says 30 to 32 townhouse style units, but we're actually gonna be doing 32. These are all two bedroom units and they're all owned. We are showing 60 spaces currently, but we're gonna go to 64, which will be required for 32 units. We're gonna be showing, we are showing 20 visitor spaces, two of those being ADA compliant. And we will have six affordable units in the development. From a building construction point of view, we're gonna be using the 2015 IBC series with all the mass amendments, raw wood frames of type five, construction type, fully sprinkled and double wall, everything's fire rated, so all up to code. Next slide, please. So this slide is really just looking at kind of the broader opportunities for not only 68 Prospect Street, but you know, to see if we can find ways of creating value for, for everyone sort of in and around the area. But we all know that this is a great site from a vehicular standpoint, so we have access to 195, 114, 128. So it's very good from that standpoint. Also easily walkable to the walking and biking trails on Lowell Street and behind the mall, so that's a great amenity. Brookside Farm, of course, is another amenity. There have been some discussions about how we might start to get across Prospect Street. And Chris and I were just talking about, there's a crosswalk that's being proposed that will link from our side of Prospect, sorry, Prospect Street to the other side. And we're gonna coordinate to figure out where that goes. The idea would really be to tie into that retail destination of the North Shore Mall. So if you go to the next one, please. So this side just zooms in a little bit more on the immediate site. As we can see, the, the site is actually very well buffered on all four sides. There are a couple of edges that we've been really talking a little bit more about. Prospect Street, of course. I wish I could point, but basically we are, we're gonna be reworking the sidewalk along Prospect Street from the corner of our property, from the cemetery to the southern portion of our property. That's what we're proposing currently. As we know, there's also an existing mound that's directly adjacent to the entry. All of that is gonna get removed and you'll see in the slide how really overgrown it is. And we just wanna make that as safe as possible. Also, the northern edge, which is at the top of the screen, you see the, the blue dash line and a red dash line, that represents two existing fences. And as you'll see, our thought is that the wooden fence that's shown in red, we're actually looking to remove and basically move the privacy line to where the chain link is. And we'll have to figure out a way to screen that and make it so that it's, you know, nicer than just a chain link. But the idea is to really take that privacy line and move it further north. This slide also indicates some of the elevations kind of running south to north along the site. So we started elevation 100 at the bottom of the screen and we descend down to the plateau, as we call it, which is roughly elevation 93 to 90. That's the middle zone. And then it descends down to elevation 80, as you'll see in this section as well. If you go to the next slide, please. So this is just context images of the three edges that I was just talking about. So just quickly, quickly to the left is the southern edge that's closest to the Essex Green edge. So we can see that's really well buffered. And here we also see the elevation 100 and how it starts to descend to that plateau. The middle image is a view of that mound that's currently next to the entry. Again, that's all gonna get removed to be made much safer. And then to the right is the wooden fence that we were just talking about and looking to move that as well. Next slide, please. So this is kind of a first aerial view of the whole development. And what's important about this slide is really the phase one. So our thought is we're gonna do 12 units as part of phase one. All of the work along Prospect Street will be done as well as the first part of that central parking and the central commons as well. And then phase two will follow with the rest of the units as shown. Next slide, please. So this slide shows a general section across the site. So following that red line sort of from left to right, that's elevation 100. And then you can see how it descends to that central plateau to elevation 93, 90. And then as we go further to the right, you see how the site will then slope down to elevation 80. And that light dashed blue line represents the location of the existing chain link fence. So again, just a general view sort of through the site. And just a note, I met with Tom McMullin, our landscape architect regarding that central, well, all of the landscaping, but specifically that central island. It's shown as, you know, being very lush, which is what we wanna do. But Chris has put some infiltration tanks in there, so we have to just coordinate that. And it was an issue that was raised at one of our last meetings, so we are working on it and we are addressing it. Next one, please. So, you know, we've all been up Prospect Street, but this is really just for a matter of record. So we can see all the trees that are sort of outboard of that stone wall. Those are all getting removed. The sidewalk, we know is in rough shape, so that's all getting taken out as well. Next slide, please. And this is really just a preliminary illustrative to kind of show our design intent. So the idea of, you know, making this entry as safe as possible. We do wanna make it beautiful, of course, but we wanna make it safe first and foremost. So again, removing the, all that underbrush and all those trees and strategically landscaping this front so that we get visibility in and out, I think is what we're trying to do. Next slide, please. So this slide also, it's, so it's directly across from the entry. And what's important about this slide is to show the proximity of the, the curb cut. That's across from our new curb cut as shown here. And the idea that, you know, we've got traffic coming from left to right on the screen on Prospect Street. We've got people coming off of this curb cut and then our new curb cut being adjacent to it or closer to it actually makes it much safer. So it's easy for pedestrians, for cars and people getting in and out. So that's really the, the idea of this slide. Next one, please. So this slide, it's a little technical, but just wanted to illustrate if we follow the red line from left to right, so that's the grading coming down from elevation 80 down to this natural swale that runs kind of north, along the north, well, actually runs east-west, yes, correct. Along the northern edge. And so we see the two dash lines representing the two fences. So the existing wooden fence, which is about 10 feet off of the property line, that's the one that we want to remove. And we want to create or recreate the privacy line on the chain link fence line. So we'll have to figure out a way to take that chain fence and really make it feel very private. And of course, we'll clean up all that underbrush and make it kind of clean and accessible as well. Next slide, please. So then just quickly zooming in on the south units, these are the smaller units. So you can see again, if we follow that red line, how the grading works. So elevation 100 is on the backside of these units. And then we're descending down to the central plateau to get to elevation 90. So imagine if you come in through the front door, you would then take a set of stairs up to the main living floor, which was living room, kitchen, dining, open concept with a patio off the back. There is a bonus room behind the garage and then we'll, we'll just carve into the back and get some light and make sure that we have access from that egress, I should say. And then on the second floor, we've got the bedrooms, similar to the other side. Next slide, please. So these are the north units. And again, if we follow that red line, the grading, so you come in. In this case, you're actually coming into the living room, kitchen and open dining. And then you would take a staircase down and then exit out the back. Yeah, it's a walkout. And again, you can see, I think you can get a hint of that channel fence along the back. Next slide, please. Just a general view of kind of the central commons. Again, our, our goal is to make this development feel as leafy as possible. You know, we love the character of Emery Street and we wanna bring some of that kind of up the hill and kind of keep it low, quiet scale as part of the development. So we are, we will be working very closely with Tom to make sure that we can try to get some of this look and feel onto his actual plan. Next slide, please. Are we stuck, Drew? Oh, yeah. So again, this is really just another view showing the experience along the north side of the development. And really, the, the spirit of the slide is to talk about the scale of the, the architecture and make sure that again, it's quiet, it's a little bit more understated and really feels like it can sort of sit between Essex Green, which is a little bit taller, and Emery Street, which is a little bit smaller. And we think that this is gonna fit nicely in between those two scales. Next slide, please. And then just a view of the, the central commons. This is a progress view, but we'll have the mailboxes, of course. And then try to get some seating, maybe some nice landscaping to, to make it into a nice amenity for the residents. Last slide, please. Yeah, so that's really kind of the quick overview of the architecture portion. Again, our goal is to, you know, to keep the, the scale down to keep the architecture kind of quiet and a little bit more understated and sophisticated. You know, there was a question about light levels and lighting plan, which we will be working on. But again, you know, we want that to be kind of rich lighting and, you know, just so it feels like a really built project. Any questions at this point?
Dr. Otto?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yeah. I'm having a little trouble understanding the section because the north bank of units looks like it has a garage on the ground floor. But what's shown in the section is the living room. So how does that exactly work?
Yeah, it's, it's next to it. Yeah, I apologize. I didn't provide a plan.
Oh, I see. Side to side?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so, and I should have, I should have mentioned, but the north units are actually a little bit wider. So as you come in, you take a staircase up and a staircase down. But the, the living room and kitchen and dining is behind the garage.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Roy?
Thank you, John. Yeah, a few questions through the chair to the, to the architect. If.
Feel free.
So the plans show 30 units. You, you said 32. Which, which two buildings each get an extra unit?
Chris Mello, he's still Land Survey. The building is parallel.
Give me a building number, Chris. I got, I got, I got the plans right here.
All right, I gotta open them up. What do we got? Kevin, open the plan up. Okay, so the south west, the south side, coming in on the left. So coming in on the left side of the back. Still don't have buildings. We're working out. Okay. Units 14 through 18, which I'm not sure what the building number is, is the west units. That will get a, an extra unit. In the back. Do we know where we are?
That's building three.
Building three. Thank you, Jack.
So that building, instead of having five, gets eight?
I'm sorry, seven? Gets one more.
One more.
That'll get one more. And we're gonna alter the location slightly. And Jack, what's the building up? Right here. Jack, what's this building?
One and two.
Building two will also get an extra unit. And those will be accomplished by moving the cubes around slightly.
Okay.
And fitting them in.
Becomes an eight unit. Building three becomes a six unit.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I heard the architect mention. I, I don't know if he said eight affordable or did he say six affordable?
Six. Six affordable.
Isn't this 20% because of the overlay?
It is, yes.
So do you round down?
We do. No. Yes, yes, no, we, we round down from the half.
Yes, from the half. So, so I believe we would be at 6.4 units.
Yeah, yeah. We've, we've run this by community development through current, we need six.
Very good. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add for a point of clarification for the, and I'm sure Attorney Kelty will mention this as well. But just to, just to explain to everybody, they, the applicant, Ben Cora, Mr. Kelty, Mr. Mello, they have come before a plan, a construction review and they came before Will Paulitz and myself in a secondary meeting. They are fully aware that they'll need third-party review for different aspects of this project. And there's still things that I know engineering is looking for. So we welcome them here tonight so that they could present this project to the planning board. As you can see, the plans clearly still need to be finalized, but we wanted that planning board to have the ability to comment on now so that your comments can be added in as the plans are brought to finality. So I would definitely use this opportunity now to comment on items that you would like to see or things of clarification.
Thank you, Drew. I was actually gonna bring up the peer review, so it appears that's underway anyway.
We will actually be working with Horst Lee Witten, Ty and Bond and Weston Sampson, which were the three companies that were assigned to us with 54 Prospect. So there'd be some cohesiveness and uniformity. And then we've also engaged, and the counting is going on as we speak. We engage Bayside Engineering and I don't think we're going to get a peer review. Will had thought that the World Tech peer review of Bayside's work down the street would probably suffice in terms of, with some additional counts. So we expect, and then we also, our decks are going to create the need for variance, but the building commissioner had suggested we go through these steps so that we could gain comments and, and critique from the various boards. And then we'll apply for the next round at ZBA.
Thank you. Dr. Otto?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we gonna go through drainage and infiltration and lighting and all these technical things now? Are we gonna save that for a later point?
Your prerogative. If you'd like to do that now, we can. That's all going to be peer reviewed. But if there, if you'd like sort of a highlight of what happens with those, we're happy to do that this evening.
I had one particular concern and that is that the driveway location doesn't match up with the opposite driveway. And I'm wondering what opportunities you do have to, to get a better alignment there.
We're opening our plans.
I will also add that the presentation that I was just showing also has the site plan on it, but it sounds like things are changing unless if, Chris, you want me not to share the site plan that you provided as well.
Actually, if you do that, I'm opening it up and I'd be happy to go through that. So we're sitting here looking at, sheet marks is the title sheet. If you could scroll through. Sheet two is the existing conditions. Sheet three is the existing conditions in front of the Avalon property up to the intersection of Prospect and Cross. That plan is provided so we can look at the traffic, look at the sidewalk and the access as we may improve it. Sheet three being the layout. Going further.
For.
And Dr. Otto, as you can see there, we brought either one of those, either sheet three or four. I've altered the proposed entrance to the facility directly opposite, we'll call it the hotel slash restaurant rear entrance from Prospect Street. So we have aligned that to to eliminate some traffic conflicts. So I'm not sure what you were looking at, but I'm happy to talk to you about that.
So what we're looking at is not what you are currently proposing? Is that correct?
No, we are. We're looking at that right there. That's the proposed driveway and that's directly opposite the, I don't know what to call it. It's as close as I can get it because they're not quite, Oz is a little bigger. But that's the rear driveway from the hotel, Friedman, Viaggio and Daniel's. But that's the rear driveway from the hotel, Friedman, Viaggio, and Daniel's.
Yeah, I understand. Well, I'm I think what I'm looking for is a better match on the center points. I mean, I can see that the the horizontal lines on the curb areas align, but the center lines of them do not.
Yeah, I might be four or five feet off, but that we certainly can look at that and have our traffic consultant comment on it. But that was my my pick as to where I thought it worked best with the radiuses I was trying to achieve for the vehicles coming in and out of our our facility. And the fire department had provided up some minimum radiuses, which I checked and applied to what we had. And our radiuses exceed their their needs to get their vehicle in.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, from the chair, Mr. Mello, is Prospect Street two ways at that point?
There's always the question. It's not.
So
Joe, Joe's gonna explain exactly what happens. Because I I've been known to go with the wrong way.
Right hand side, yes.
Go ahead, Joe. Go for it.
No, it's okay. So coming out of Emery Street, you can make a left coming out of Emery. Otherwise, it's a one-way from there south or up the hill.
Is there signage to that? Because I have
Yeah, yeah, there is.
Okay. If you exit the driveway across from our proposed driveway, if you're exiting there from the restaurant, for instance, there's a left-only sign directly right there.
Would there be any interest in in making two-way from your property down to one fourteen?
If you would like, you can certainly take a crack at it.
Well, I'm curious as to what your traffic people might have to offer on that.
Then I'm sure that they'll be looking at that. But the city and its wisdom has put something in place that actually works pretty well. But we've asked Ken Cram from Bayside to look at that. And I'm sure he'll opine.
Still with you, Chris, can you go over your the current stormwater system?
Sure. We can go to, let's try it, Drew, if you'd like, shift a couple more pages. Let's see, try one, see what happens. That's a good one.
Yeah, five.
So what we have is our bank of units surrounding the perimeter of the property with a driveway that comes in and circulates on both sides with parking. The current sewer from the MRI building comes in from Prospect Street, has its own manhole, it's a line, and then it services that building. We're gonna utilize that same position, bring in a sanitary sewer from Prospect Street going towards the west. It will then come up into our driveway facility and serve all the individual units with their own line. We'll bring in a water line off the ten-inch line in Prospect Street. We'll bring an eight-inch line in. We will service all the individual units for water. We will service the buildings with fire suppression. And we will have a hydrant at the west of the end of the Ireland facility to service general fire suppression. The stormwater management will be an infiltration system largely placed in the center of the buildings that shows up in detail on some of the other sheets. But it's a large infiltration system that will take the water in. This is another system on the southerly side of building three that shows up as passive recreation and snow storage and some of the plants. And currently, the water, stormwater runs totally overland. There isn't a catch based on this property. It she drains into a swale that goes into the the stormwater management facility to the west of our property on the Avalon property. That was built to compensate for the Avalon development, which originally had eye drainage on it because this entire site was owned by Beverly Hospital, not these health. They sold this piece off to the MRI's building people. And their stormwater, when they sold that off, was all on the other eleven or twelve acres that became Avalon. When Avalon was permitted, they eliminated that stormwater management system and built this new one on the westerly side of this plan, the left, behind their building. We will not be adding any surface stormwater to that. And we will have a overflow, but all of our water will be infiltrated. There'll be no increase in runoff or rate, which is a little exceptional. That seems to be the the new rules that we're trying to follow. So that in all the storm events, we'll infiltrate our water. Nothing will leave the site.
If if I may, even from the northern edge of your your property, it's gonna run back to the center of the property?
That's correct. You'll see that there's an existing swale there.
Correct.
It will be maintained. So that water will continue.
To continue to go to the west?
It'll continue to go to the west.
And the fact that that is on the property of another, that stormwater facility? It's not
We we have the right to do that. We've gone through the Conservation Commission with a determination of applicability that we do not have a resource area, therefore we do not have buffer. And that came with the caveat that we we shall not change or increase our runoff from the site, which we will not. And that will become part of the peer review with Horst Lee Witten.
I think that's it for me. Thank you. Anyone else?
Roy, please.
You're muted, Roy.
Sorry about that. So the the garage, the enclosed single-car garage and the single-car driveway is how you come up with your sixty-four parking spaces. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then additionally, we have twenty spaces in our island.
Understood. Thank you. I I'd like it if the if the board, the rest of the board would indulge me and, I mean, and and ask that you kind of explain your retaining wall because it's not that clear what you intend on doing here on the site. But let me finish, and then there's not much more. Just a just a clarification. You mentioned, this was Chris, you just said something about you talked about water, you talked about sewer, you talked about fire, and you kept saying individual units. I suspect what you mean by that, calling a unit is a building. Right? You're not gonna bring, you're not gonna bring water, separate water sewer and fire to every single unit of the thirty-two units, are you?
We're gonna bring separate water and sewer to each unit.
Yep.
And then we'll bring a fire suppression line to each building.
Okay.
But no, we're gonna have individual sewer services. We're not gonna try to run one line parallel for six or eight units and dump it into the manhole. It just becomes a a long-term logistical nightmare.
We'll have direct flushing.
If somebody, if the unit blows up in unit thirty-two and unit twenty-eight and nine are below it, and you have to dig through their cellar, it does not work.
Okay. And the last thing is about all this infiltration that you're trying to do here. And I'm very familiar with Caltex, as you know, Chris.
Buy stock.
What's that?
Buy stock.
Yeah, exactly. Is is, so I guess my my question is, how deep is ledge here? Does that, have you found, do you know what ledge is and why I'm asking that? Is is there a point with this big hill that you infiltrate so much water that it hits the ledge and runs down and blows out somebody's lawn on Emery? And I know that's happened when some blasting occurred up at Oak Hill.
We we did substantial soil testing. And we had no refusal, no ledge, tremendous permeable soil, good gravel, which is why we're able to infiltrate this. And I don't know, and I know it's it's an unfair question and unfair answer, Roy, but I don't know any exposed ledge in the general area that we've seen, and we hit nothing. And I know that if you just go past Emery Street down to one fourteen, they excavated that site and built that wall for that plaza. And we we feel that we have the soil and the capacity to infiltrate that. It's a good site.
So I guess the, just the last thing that I already talked about, if you just want to explain your your retaining wall concept and how that might affect the neighbors.
Yeah, we don't have any.
We receive that wall.
I don't think we have a wall on the site.
Oh, well, you have a detail on one of your sheets.
Yes.
Going in eight foot.
That's the, that's the extra two hundred and fifty dollars on the detail sheet. But we do not have one, and I know that detail is there.
Okay, so you're not, there is no retaining wall?
No, there aren't.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, and honestly, could we get a wing wall out of one of the buildings for grading? That's kind of why that's there, is you, as you get the return for the walkout sellers at each end of the building, there could be a couple of feet that you want to hold back. But there's nothing to do.
I thought you were gonna try to put in a retaining wall on that north line and try to recoup some more flat area.
No, that's why we're, we've got the step system coming from south to north, if you will, as Joe showed you in his sections, where we get the the second level walkout, the garage first floor, the flat paving garage, drop down eight feet to the walkout, and then we're in grade again. We're in pretty good shape.
And do you, do you know the 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 cut and fill here? Is there material leaving the site, coming back, coming into the site? Is, do you know the percentages of, is it neutral?
No, I don't, but I feel that it's it's more of an equal fill barrel than other sites. And by the time we're done, we will have that answer because it's important to Mr. Hoyle to know whether he's importing or exporting.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. Okay?
Go ahead.
So this was mentioned, everyone, previous, but the reason that this application is before you is due to the overlay district that was approved, I believe, two years ago for the mall area. That being said, the applicants will have to go in front of the city council for a special permit. On top of that, Jack, will you need a variance because there's no retail component to this?
No.
You want for the setback?
We're fine on a setback. Oh, this is the triple.
It has to be three hundred percent.
Is this the zoning district that without commercial, the same as on Route One, where you triple the setback?
Yeah, I believe it's a hundred feet, and so you'd have to be three hundred feet back. So I think you would have, I mean, you would have to go get a variance for that.
I'll include that with the decks.
Back into that, you are, seem to be doing quite a bit of document wrangling between traffic and different items with stormwater. I, one, just wanna make sure that you get all the new plans to the right people, mainly the engineering department. But I want to be privy to those plans as well, so please send me a copy of the new plans when you do that. I want to make sure the plan board has them. You mentioned in the application, you're seeking a waiver for a lighting plan because you do not have the technology. Photometric plan. Personally, from community developments, or from community development standpoint, I'd like to know what kind of light, I mean, you're gonna be above the people behind you on Emery there. I I mean, I, if you're not gonna show the photometric plan, then, I mean, if you're gonna do any sort of lighting on that, I know it's people's personal decks, but I don't know, are you gonna do any building lighting on the exterior?
The current, the current plan has a conceptual lighting plan that includes a colonial porch light, if you will, on each deck. And it includes a recessed light on the portico over the front walk on all the units. And then we have a couple of parking lot lights, if you will, colonial lights in that island. And we certainly can look at the ramifications of the photometrics.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you're, the lighting on the back seems pretty minimal. But I mean, this kind of goes to my second point where I think the back buffer needs to be significant vegetation. I know you're putting the fence there, but again.
So so Drew, if I could say, we we share the same sentiment. We definitely want lighting to be of high quality. We want it to be a little bit sort of, I'll call it lower scale. You know, washing the stone and, you know, kind of capturing some of the details and not being too bright. So I'm gonna be doing some work on the architectural side. And I can, you know, sort of put together some views and maybe some comps, just so that we all have a sense of what we're trying to do. But we definitely share that sentiment, that we don't want to, you know, overlight this thing. And we want to, you know, make it sophisticated.
Yeah, no, no, just a final question here, actually, Roy, you might know. But at the construction review meeting, you had talked with Will Cardello about the electric equipment that's gonna have to be out there and that you need to figure out a place for that to go. Has that been decided yet?
Not yet. We will work with the with the with the the engineer and the electrical contractor and get it all nailed down to meet specifications. I don't see any problem whatsoever with that.
Does that, it's not a, it's not like a big, it's like four by four, correct, the equipment that's gonna go out there?
Probably a little bigger.
Yeah.
The pads, the pad, the pad would probably be six foot by seven feet. I'm I'm assuming it would probably be one larger transformer as opposed to a bunch of smaller ones, is my, is my initial suspicion.
Yeah. Do you know where, I guess the reason I'm asking is because for the site plan review of this project, I think it'd be helpful to know where it's gonna be so the planning board, you guys can all have an idea of what it's gonna look like on site. And then getting to my second point is that
If it's, if it's one, if it's one unit, it would more than likely have to reside somewhere near that mailbox cluster.
Okay.
The team, the team acquiesces that wherever PMLP wants it, we're gonna find room for it, landscape around it, and make it look good.
Yeah, and and I don't doubt that. And and then there would probably be five, six, seven, or eight meter stack banks per building, all all clustered in one, on one side of each building.
No problem.
Yep. Yep. And then I just also wanted to point out, and I know that the applicants are aware of this, but at the construction review meeting as well, Captain Dowling from the fire department had asked, and I believe Captain Richards had as well, that currently, or as the project was submitted, the traffic pattern was cars would be able to go either way around the circle and for all intents and purposes inside there. And Captain Richards had asked that it be one-way traffic flow, so that you would
Yes, that we certainly look at that. I don't think, and we we, when we commissioned Ken Cram, we had him look at that issue too. I don't think that the captain was saying that he he wanted us to look at it, as I recall, not necessarily make it one way around. But that's just my notes and my recollection.
And I believe you had sent over already the truck turning radiuses to Captain Dowling.
We got those the, that very afternoon, and I sent them off to Mr. Mello. And he has already applied them to these.
I I reviewed those, excuse me. And our radiuses exceed the standards that he provided us with. We have a greater turning radius, so we have a little extra room for his vehicles. We're in good shape.
Perfect.
Anyone else? Anything to offer?
I I just want to say that it, from what I saw in the presentation, it looks like a a a really aesthetically pleasing design.
Thank you.
That was for the architect, not for you, Chris.
Yeah. Hey, I take it when I can get it.
You know, we have a great client that, that wants to push the design a little bit higher, so credit to him.
Yes. I beg it, you gentlemen will be back before us in the future?
Yes.
And if you have an updated plan prior to that meeting?
Yeah, we've got to get them to, all the peer review will need to be that, as well as Ken Cram needs to know the unit count change for his information too.
Anything further?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you. I think that's a wrap on this portion.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Jack, unless you wanna unless you want to speak about Stonegate, we have your letter, but
Hello? I'm good.
All right.
All right. All right, next item on the agenda is appointments and we have none. Item E is Stonegate subdivision. I believe we had a, have a letter from Attorney Kelty?
Yeah, there should be a letter, Chair, in your meeting packets.
Someone care to receive and address that?
I'm sorry, I didn't see it in the packet along with the minutes of the other meeting.
I've seen it. It's, it's, it was in mine anyway. It's dated the eighteenth.
For the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a motion to receive the letter dated May eighteenth from Attorney Kelty's office to extend the subdivision application until June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one?
You have a second? Roy, Roy seconded. Now, that was just to receive or grant the extension?
Grant the extension as well.
Motion to receive and grant the extension of time. All in favor?
Everybody has raised their hand, unanimous.
I, I keep asking the same question. Does, does anybody know what's taken so long and when are we gonna see a set of plans?
Well, I was, I was hoping Jack would chat a little bit about that, but I know that they are working on new plans. I believe the idea is that they are, and this is strictly what I think is happening, is that they are working on these new plans, making sure and working with the Department of Engineering closely to make sure that everybody is on the right page with these plans before making sure that they finalize and send in something new. I believe the, the idea is, and I know Jack had mentioned this in another meeting, that the, the plan has changed quite a bit up there that I think it's gonna require, which I would almost ninety-eight percent guarantee that it's gonna require a new filing up there. And then Jack mentioned this at the other plan or at the other, another meeting, but from the plan that I saw, it is significantly smaller footprint than what was proposed before.
Thank you.
But I think Roy was happening right now is that they're one doing kind of there, I think they just want to make sure they have the right plan before they come through and, you know, what happened last time, continuance, continuance, continuance happens again.
Okay.
Okay, Stonegate, anything on Stonegate?
Just did Stonegate.
Oh, sorry.
Boulderwood, I'm still meeting Department of Engineering memo.
City Council special permits, any commentary on those? Nothing? All right, I'll accept the motion of the evening.
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
Have a second? Mr. Gagnon, all in favor?
Hi.
Ananamous, Drew.
All right, everyone, have a great evening and have a great weekend and we will see you at the next meeting.
Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.